Yep.
Yes, sir.
Like to call the order of March twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, planning board meeting. Chris, will you call the roll?
Yes, sir. We did receive word that Ethan Parker would not be able to make this meeting. So that counts on him. Ty Cannon, Chad McAvery.
Here.
Ken Sullivan.
Here.
Susan Minette.
Here.
Andrew Beasley.
Here.
And John McCovin.
Here.
Did I pronounce that last name right?
Dubovic. Ah, getting closer. Yeah, all right.
I'll get you.
All right, well, Ty's supposed to be here. We're not going to excuse his absence yet, but if he gets here, we'll do that.
Okay.
Um, can I get a motion to excuse Ethan Parker's absence?
A motion to excuse Ethan Parker's absence.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion's passed.
You did the second on that one?
I heard three of them.
It was all at the same time.
Anybody but me. I'll do it.
All right, I got it. I got it.
Okay, next item on the agenda is approval of the February twenty sixth, twenty twenty four Planning Board minutes. Anybody have any issues, edits? Or a motion to approve?
A motion to approve.
Okay, we got that. Okay, do we have a second?
First one.
Chad with the second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is passed. Item number four, we all out there, U D O amendment discussion, section six point three, stormwater management. Uh, we were given amended code approved by the Board of Commissioners at the March twelfth meeting with instructions to research its engineering requirements are needed for projects in a special flood hazard area. Now, this is for discussion. We're not planning on voting on anything tonight. Um, so if you've got something to add to it, please go to the podium and state your name. So Chris has it for the minutes, and we'll try to let everybody speak as long as they want, as long as, not more than three minutes. With that said, Chris?
So, a couple of things. Just one, I've given the board just the updated version of what the Board of Commissioners did a vote upon at their March twelfth meeting. So that effectively is reverting the stormwater code back to what was adopted in January of twenty three. This board's, um, this board's instructions were to take it back to a twenty-two date. That was the only adjustment made in between that twenty-two date and present. And that effectively, it had the required engineering for small residential projects, and it also had the town provided engineer review, so the double engineer review of the, um, of the project. It also shifted the minimum dirt turning, dirt disturbing, uh, from five hundred back to a thousand what it was before that. So you have with you in your package is what was adopted by the board, um, and it was done by unanimous vote, so that, that has been adjusted. The instruction given from the board, um, quit doing that in front of Mike, uh, it, it is looking in researching requirements that may be needed on stormwater, stormwater management planning, uh, in special flood hazard areas. Very similar to what you guys reviewed, uh, late in twenty-three. We can take a look at that. Um, I believe everybody did receive an email from Commissioner Brownlow, uh, some work that he's done on innovative, innovative stormwater techniques that, uh, is for informational purposes. Um, it's not a, an instruction from the Board of Commissioners.
Didn't you get that too?
Yeah.
Okay.
So those, those are options to consider, but it's, it's just really, I think, step one and, um, was to shift back to where stormwater was, uh, better received our codes and regulations and just see what adjustments may or may not be needed. There may not be any needed adjustment to that. So that's, that's instructions from the Board of Commissioners to take a look at that. You know, if there's any documentation that you need staff to provide, you guys, we're here to help you out and, um, help you through the process. That's all I've got.
Can I ask you a question?
Yep.
Can you tell us what you said there earlier about the last board meeting?
Hello? Tell us what you said about the last board meeting, about what, was it post, was it pre-engineering? So the, we don't have to have an engineering plan now, is that correct?
For small residential projects, there is not, uh, an engineer stormwater plan requirement.
Okay.
Plus, uh, because all of this were part of the changes that were adopted in January twenty-three, uh, so it takes that portion out, so we, we still recommend an engineer stormwater plan, but it's not a requirement.
Okay.
And then the engineer overview, uh, where we had Mr. Sneeden review all these stormwater plans on a small development.
Okay.
That is also taken out.
Okay. Are you still charging the five hundred dollar fee for the smaller homes and then the thousand dollar fee for the?
Well, fifteen hundred, uh, fifteen hundred for the large projects still remain because that, that requires to be engineered.
Still, still have to have engineer.
Yeah, but the, the small residential, that's the, what was then five hundred to nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine.
Yep.
Um, that was a small stormwater project that was required a five hundred dollar, because that was just what the engineer was charging us to review.
Okay. All right, we don't have a problem with that, right, Bruce? Yep. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, if you do decide to implement some of these things that Mr. Brownlow was talking to y'all about, we'd like to, if we could form a small committee where we could all have a, something to say on the input, being that we deal with it every day and with your office.
Yeah, I mean, that's, um, I don't think there's any rush to judgment unless anybody corrects me on that. We're, we're just trying to make sure that we position the town appropriately for, you know, as things continue to develop, that they will, so.
We agree. Thank you.
I wanted to ask after last week or last month, um, and there was a lot of talk about permits taking a really long time.
Mm-hmm.
And I, and I had mentioned I had neighbors that had been trying to build their house for a year, and so I went back and was talking to them, and I was just wondering if we could see how long permits are taking to get through the process if they've been filled out correctly, what that timeline is versus, and then how many of these permits are taking a long time because they're missing information? Like, I just wonder if we have a, I just want to make sure I'm making the decision on the right thing. Is it really because the permitting takes forever, or is it because we're not, the people are not putting the right information in and that's causing, I mean, it's like taxes, you know?
All of the above. We, we have seen, we, a lot of our delays right now, since I've been here, have been inadequate information on what leaves incomplete applications, and we're having to go back to whoever, the applicant, property owner, whichever, and explain, all right, you know, you still need to do X, Y, Z. Um, now, I have heard, because, you know, we started this process with one engineering firm. Both are qualified, but one just, it would take upwards of two weeks or whichever to review whatever was sent to them, and it's, it's that backlog that just boils over. Um, the gentleman that we switched to prior to me coming on board, uh, he was fairly good as far as getting, as long as he got everything up front, three to five days, we were getting it turned around. Now, we worked towards that, uh, because it was a realization that there was some delay, and quite possibly it could be just the transition in my position and added to that. There's, there's a lot of different facets that go into that. But what we're seeing more now than anything, the delays are just incomplete or inconsistent applications. We'll get camo permits that don't match what they're applying for on the zoning and all that stuff, and that does delay things.
And then you're talking about those two engineering firms. Those are the ones that, so if I'm going to build a house, I have to employ that engineer to come up with my wastewater, or is this the town? Like, you're talking about the review by the town?
Yeah, it was, it was the firms that we had to review whatever stormwater plans that, because we, we don't employ engineers on staff.
There could have been a delay on those.
Right, exactly. That's, yeah, that's what I'm saying. Like, I'm just trying to make sure I understand, like, all the things.
They were so much on the backlog, they couldn't get to the work.
Two of them. You've got to have your own engineer and then the second one.
Yeah.
That seems like a lot of engineer.
So, um, and, you know, prior to that change, we had as a town, just that for these smaller lots, hey, look, you know, you give staff adequate information that you're retaining the two inches, and we've accepted it in the past. So that's essentially what we did, is just go back to that, that point, and seem to be working efficiently.
And it's going to take us two months, or three months, two and a half months to get our stuff to the town. That's what, that's why we were having a three or four month period. The time we get our stuff that permit, that takes us two weeks, but the time we get it surveyed, takes us a month usually. Then, what's that, two, three, two to three months, you can say now to get a survey.
To get a survey.
And then we have to have a survey before you have an engineer, so it was, it was just, it was like a three or four month period in there, what we used to get in a month, twenty-five days. So this taking the engineer off, it really is going to help us in those, because we'll go back to the twenty-five day period.
But I, I want to make sure, and prior to the twenty, January twenty-three adjustments, there was the requirement of providing those contours, so that is still a requirement. That's, it's imperative that you have that to actually develop the stormwater plan, so I don't want anybody to think that that's been taken off. That is still a requirement.
The togo and the contours, yes, sir.
Yeah, yes, sir.
And that's been on there for the last ten years.
Yeah, and, and, so, yeah, um, and one of the things, you know, there is a shortage of surveyors around here. I get that. Um, that's like what Mr. Ferri said, that's kind of leading to some of the delays, but there's still that oversight that they, they're going to provide, so we'll know the contours of that property, both existing and in whatever they're proposing, know where the stormwater is going on the smaller ones.
So the, um, the contours that you're talking about, is that what you're referring to, this is page five of eighteen, showing contours every two feet, it must also show the cross-section and location of drainage dishes within the area surveyed and the location of wetlands and ponds?
Yeah. So you'll, you'll know, well, staff will know, again, when they provide us with sufficient data on these smaller projects, we'll see, you know, what the surveyor measured as far as the grade on the ground, so you can see, obviously, higher up, gravity's going to feed it down, so we'll have that adequate information to make that determination.
Well, the reason I was asking about it is because I wasn't, I'm not a surveyor, so it may be something that doesn't happen very often, but I was like, the thing that caught my attention was the cross-section and location of drainage dishes, that.
Well, that'll, probably cross-section be this little two-dimensional showing of like, uh, if it's a ditch, your slope on that ditch.
Is that something that we do, you have that very often?
Yeah, I mean, it's a.
The cross-section.
I've not seen them. That's why I'm saying that.
It's, my understanding, it was what we had on, let's see, you said five of eighteen.
Five of eighteen.
I thought it was a cross-section of your stormwater plan.
Yeah, if you want to see what I'm looking at, because I was like.
Showing contours every two feet, it also must show the cross-section and location of drainage ditches within the area surveying, um, and the location of wetlands and ponds. So it's, it's not really the storm, it's the drainage ditches. I guess in my mind, I'm thinking anything on roadfront, most of those are.
Most of the island, regardless of drainage.
That's, that's why I was wondering if that was something that we just don't have very often.
Well, I think.
That's why I said I assumed it was stormwater, that it was all cross-section of, because there are very, very huge drainage dishes. I meant to say swells.
Yeah.
You said swells.
Well, and again, what this was doing is, was taking it back to that, uh, recommended timeframe. Um, but yeah, I mean, I, I think we can help the, any applicant on, on just the swells and all that. I, I know a lot of development that has occurred on fifty-eight, DOT is part of their, their driveway permit, or having them reestablish that ditch system in between, so, um, it could be as simple as that, but.
Yeah, there's only two or three subdivision that have ditches, and other, they're roll-through ditches, so they don't even have impact.
Okay, okay.
So it's just, it's always been there, I've just never seen it. We don't deal with it enough.
Yes, ma'am.
So in regards to the committee, I'd like to make a motion to have the planning board, uh, do a recommendation for a committee to, um, research new ideas regarding stormwater in the future, or, and possibly bringing in, um, some people like Billy, um, that would be involved, and also, I'm not sure exactly, but.
Bring, bring the recommendation to the, to the commissioners, the committee, committee to the commissioners.
Mixed committee of, of citizens and town staff and board members to, um, examine different ways to, to deal with stormwater.
Yeah, very.
I volunteer to represent the board and system.
Yeah, I mean, you've done a lot of research, and I appreciate that. You kind of proved all that at eleven o'clock last night.
You don't have any lawyers.
Fire. I got up to take the puppy out.
Yeah, I mean.
My phone was blowing up, so.
Okay, so we have a motion to recommend to the Board of Commissioners that they develop a committee to study future possibilities on how to deal with stormwater, mixed with citizens, town staff, and, and planning board members.
Professionals.
Professionals.
Professionals, building professionals as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
True.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second. Any other?
Did she, she went second, did she?
Yeah. Any, any other discussion? Any volunteers? All those, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll, you got that, we'll want to recommend the commissioner form a committee to study this further.
Yeah, we'll present that to the board at their, it's April ninth, I think it's, actually, yeah, I've got it off to April ninth meeting for their consideration.
Yep. Y'all, y'all agree with that? I probably won't be on it if I can help it.
I will volunteer to be on it as well.
You will?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would be on it.
I can't tell you how many committees and someone I've been voluntold to do. Voluntold, you understand what that is, right? Okay, um, anything else on that issue? Okay, good. I'm, put that in the minutes. Billy said, I'm good.
I think you're all tired of listening to this?
No, not at all. You know, I got you the, you and your brother in the minutes of that one reading. I quoted what you two said. You said, "You trust me," and Jimmy said, "This is the best board the town's ever had." So I got that put in the minutes. I repeated it, just so it'd be in the minutes.
Now it's in there again. Look, God, they're bringing this up every month. I like it.
Somebody, somebody's got to be nice to me. Nobody else will do it. I gotta do it to myself. Okay.
Kenny, did y'all have any questions about what I submitted at eleven o'clock at night? Some of us, a lot of it was repeated. I found out, like I said, it's a very rough draft, and, but it's, um, it's based on that report, and in camo, we'll see that, I rely a lot on the science, we make the determinations, and the innovative approach, the stormwater approach, um, design is that it's, it's attacking the root of the problem, so treating the water after it's already hit the roots and coming on the ground, we're trying to limit the amount of impervious surface, and that's, seems to be what's, the root of the problem is, is the, result of development. I was looking at some pictures today, from nineteen sixty-four, nineteen fifty-eight to nineteen, oh, two thousand twenty-four, and there is a lot of impervious surface that's a, that come out, out of that. And, um, it, it, it uses the, uh, some of the innovative style of bioretention swells, um, retaining the, uh, the importance and significance of retaining the natural area, using native, uh, vegetation, and it's a nature-based strategy to, instead of more corrugated pipes and old tanks, because the water table, that's not a good place to put it, especially these lower areas, or what this is, we find is floodfronts. And I saw on maps after the print, it was a whole lot better on, on computer screen, there's nice colorful light on the map, but anything you see on blue on there, that means that water table's pretty much within twelve, eighteen inches, so it's where we see blue on those, those maps. And there's a lot of houses, and that's where a lot of our flooding is occurring, so it's on Red Drive, boats down the core, everything down Oshmore Road, um, so, um, yeah, there's a lot to digest, and that's why I probably just need to take, if we're going to incorporate any of that into this, and I think it would be good if I had an approach like that, and I, I think we'll be setting a trend, and we'll be leaders in that for others to follow on this type of stormwater management, because we tried, all the boat banks, all communities have tried stuffing that stormwater into the ground, stuffing more water to the ground, and, and it just, it's not seeming to be working, but what would happen if we treated the, attacked it from the beginning with impervious surface? And I think that we're going to find out if we, by putting a cap on that, which I did some test models on it, um, if you maintain your thirty-five percent natural area, it'll be real easy to meet the thirty percent requirement. And then if that succeeds, that's when we're starting to talk about engineers, possibly, or, you know, in fact, we'll give you credit on more impervious coverage if you use more vegetation and more, um, of these surface treatments, like sheet plug, instead of gutters and stuff, so, um, but then after that, when it gets to a certain threshold, you know, it's time to bring in engineers, and it gives the discretion to planning staff, like, there might be something so unique and unusual about a lot, that they're going to say, you know what, uh, this, that wouldn't work here, but we're, we're going to need some engineers on that. So it still gives that discretion to the planning director or U D O administrator to make those determinations. There's a lot tweaking to be done on it, but I think it's, it gives a baseline for us to work off of, and I think, I think we're going to be trendsetters on this, and it's, it's going to be an interesting outcome, I believe. I think we're going to find, we're going to.
It'd be perfect.
You can't undo, you can't unring the bell if it's already been rung, but, um, when it comes to redevelopment, then, I'm not saying we're going to be able to enhance that either, because it's still, it doesn't cause any non-conformities, that's the other huge thing about this, uh, this draft, is that you can redevelop existing impervious surface, but you can't increase it. If it's already exceeded the threshold, when you redevelop it, then we bring in engineers again. So I saw on the news that it said that it was a way with stormwater engineering, or stormwater, and I was like, oh, my God.
Uh-huh.
That's just family.
Doug, have you, um, you been to Southport recently?
Uh, about a year or two ago.
Have you, you ever noticed what they've started doing, like, on the shoulders of the roads and what their, like, their off-street parking's in now, um, as far as from a permeable standpoint?
Oh, one of the.
They're basically eliminating any of the asphalt where you're, you know, the shoulder of the road was all asphalt where their parking was, it's been eliminated, and they've done all fifty-seven open aggregate now, as their stormwater, as their parking, and so now the streets, which is a large portion, as you guys have always mentioned, it's not necessarily always the lots that are creating all this, you know, stormwater we have. So maybe it's also something to look at with the committee that comes up, um, you know, seeing what they're doing down there and looking into it, because it's pretty interesting stuff that they're, you know, eliminating asphalt.
Fifty-seven, yeah. Four, six, fifty-seven, some of them are on a filter fabric cloth, that's, yeah, it's considered impervious by the state, I mean, permeable.
Permeable, yeah.
Impervious by the state.
And they're, they're doing it all down the roadside, on all the backside streets. I mean, it's not on Main Street of Southport, but it's just a pretty unique, uh, thing that they're trying to do down there, because, you know, they're, they have the same situation where water tables about.
Impervious concrete is, um, becoming more and more, I guess, affordable, popular, um, lighthouse, hotel, they're, they've got the impervious concrete. When Jordan's out of their parking lot, that was impervious concrete, so that's, if everybody does something like that, that'll help a lot, too.
And, and this also addresses maintenance on stormwater control measures also, and that ended before, but now, it's, uh, like, if, um, well, at least on commercial establishments, like, like, I was telling you, if you don't run into where the power washer can hit that thing every so often, it's going to fill up with sand, and you're just going to have all that rice crispy looking, the permeable concrete, but fill it with sand, it's no longer permeable.
As I understand it, that, there's a, you vacuum it?
Is it vacuumed?
Yeah, they, they vacuum it.
Yeah, exactly. Power back.
Yeah, that's, when, when Lighthouse came in, they said they had a maintenance schedule to vacuum the parking lot to keep it to that standard.
Every six months or something?
I think it's every six months.
And I do want to say this, thank you for the research you've done. I've got to be honest, at eleven forty P M. last night, I have not quite got through, uh, all your fact-finding and, and research, so to have time to look through it with the idea of a committee being built, I think, is a very big step up to get to something like, he was speaking with Southport, to be a trendsetter and not have that negative look. So thank you for doing that part, and I will, I will get to the bottom of all your research in due time, if you can let me be.
Yeah, I think Chris has seen some of my emails come in at twelve thirty-one, possibly, and what it says.
It's like, if you had sent that on Friday night, we could, read it all day on Saturday in the rain, because there's nothing else going on.
And I've been working on that thing for over a week now, or since the, since the Board of Commissioners meeting, and, and just trying to put things together where I have seen, I used, um, you know, the signs behind the, the camo laws on it, signs behind the, uh, the, the vicious, uh, stormwater, stormwater section, use some of their rules on it, um, it's, it's a, it's a quill work, a, a little bit of good stuff, stuff from our existing organs, um, but it's, it's just got a little bit of everything in it, it's a potpourri of, of, uh, the goodies of, uh, stormwater, plus it's based on the science of the E C Jones report, and I, I think he was spot on, because that's consistent with what Department of Environmental Quality has been going, is watching the impervious coverages. And, uh, and they, I know stormwater section tightened up years ago, what they consider to be permeable and non-permeable, uh, like those, uh, the papers that has the holes, the little empty holes in them, you know, sixty percent credit, um, and stuff like that, so, uh, and then how came the one hundred percent permeable, uh, was it tiles or, or, uh, papers, was it, it was the grout or something, that's supposed to be permeable on that, and then they, they kind of backed off of that, too, so it was, uh, the best way to do it is just kind of watch our impervious coverages. I think Coast Management had it right, uh, through the Environmental Management Commission, who designed the, uh, the thirty-foot buffer, vegetated buffer, vegetated swells, you know, we are adjacent to outstanding resource waters, one of the few areas in the state of North Carolina where the saltwater is actually considered outstanding resource water, and, um, and so, and we, we got a big job to protect that, and we still want to lose the resource that we got, it keeps people coming here, it keeps our access up.
Absolutely.
Appreciate you talking to me, actually.
So I have, I have a question, like, an information question for me, and I don't know if any of you guys can answer the question. In your, Doug, in your thing, you refer to subsurface infiltration tanks. Is that similar to the old, what I'm calling the old style that we, that the builders used to be able to go online and do those, um?
Rain pods.
Yeah, maybe.
Unit turnings, easy flow system?
It used to be able to do the calculation.
Yeah, it's still on there, it's still on.
Oh, I can't, couldn't find it, I was looking today, and I couldn't find it, but is that basically what you're referring to?
Underground stores ain't holding impervious water, it's not a tank.
So that's, so it's the same, yeah, same idea, okay. I was just trying to, I was like, trying to find the thing on the website, and I was like, maybe it's gone because they took out that, and, okay, I, I just wanted to know that for my information.
All right, good discussion. Um, I think we're done with that for now, get that committee formed, and we'll be hatching this out for the next year, probably, or longer. With that, the next item on the. With that, the next item on the agenda is a report from the Planning Director.
Just two simple items, the next Board of Commissioners meeting is the 9th of April, and your next meeting is 22nd. It would be appropriate, seeing as we're pretty much summing things up, Mr. Cannon is not here, if you guys wanted to vote on that matter, if you want to excuse him from the meeting.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, last, second to last item on the agenda, Board Comments, Chad?
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Ty from the meeting. I reached out to him, but something hasn't come up, so.
Okay, we have motion to.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Let me make a note, change my, excuse, okay.
Otherwise, Chris, thanks for sticking around, buddy.
You go, you can do it, man.
Susan?
Thanks a lot.
Is it?
Thank you, thank you guys a lot, too.
Jim?
Obviously, I got to learn a lot last month, being my first meeting. Hopefully, what has been brought back looks a little bit more favorable on everybody. Hopefully, we can work through to keep making it a little bit better, that committee, other than that. Look forward to seeing, I have good on the volunteer side, but I appreciate y'all, and that's about all I got.
I appreciate you.
All right, I just got something very short. Thanks for having a short meeting this month. Last one was only three hours.
I think you earned it last month.
I was hungry. It's like, I was like, worried about so much.
My favorite agenda item, motion to adjourn?
A second.
I didn't make a motion.
I don't know, figure it out one day.
He can't make a motion.
He stole my thunder, I was trying to be like, I'm going.
I will motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
A second, don't get seconded at first, ready? Don't just second.
You seconded it before he first did.
Okay, all right.
I'm good with that.
Aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Come on.